Good evening. Welcome to the October 17th, 2023, meeting of the City Beacon Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Jordan Haug, and I'm the chairman of the board. Joining us tonight are my fellow board members, minus one. That is relevant in that you need, always need, the majority of the total board. So you always need three yeses regardless of how many people are actually sitting here. So you have one less person up here, so you have one less possible yes. So you'll need to get three of four rather than three of five. That could become relevant later when we're making a decision. And you, as applicants, would have the opportunity to request an adjournment until all five members were present. Continuing on, we're also joined here tonight by Bruce Flower, our city building inspector, our city attorney, George, and our municipal secretary, Mercedes. Thank you guys for being here. The application material that will be discussed tonight, including any proposed resolutions and other documents, are available on the city's website. Also on the city's website is the link to the rules and procedures of the zoning board of appeals relevant to some people in the audience today. There was an adjournment granted for agenda item number three. Today, there was some submission by the city on Friday, or I guess a rendering of a decision on Friday, which led to the applicant putting us on notice that they intend to appeal that decision, which is going to further complicate the application that we are hearing and that has been adjourned, that was adjourned to tonight, and now it will be adjourned to the November 21st, 2023 meeting. So if anyone is here on that application, that has been adjourned again to November 21st, 2023. Regarding the other applications on the agenda, just as far as the procedure, we'll hear the, each application in the order that it's noticed on the agenda. For each application, we'll first hear from the applicant, and then the board will open the floor to comments from the public. If you wish to comment, please step forward to the podium when called upon and clearly state your name and address for the record. All comments should be directed to us, the board, not the applicant or to the city staff. I don't think we need a time limit today, most likely. All emails and other written correspondence sent to the zoning board secretary will be made part of the official record for the application and acknowledged. More substantively, the zoning board of appeals hears and determines appeals for administrative decisions, petitions for variance, and other such matters that may be required by the city council or the laws of the state of New York. A variance is a permission granted by the zoning board of appeals, so the property may be used in a manner not allowed by local zoning. Variance provides flexibility in the application of the zoning law and can afford the landlord an opportunity to apply for administrative relief from certain provisions of the law. The zoning board is limited to granting the minimum variance necessary that addresses the need for the variance while preserving the character, health, safety, and welfare of the community. On the final decision, our final decision on any variance application must be based on the evaluation of the applicable statutory factors as set forth in the city general law and city code. Relevant for the two applications this evening, those are area variance requests, and here are the factors of the area variance, and this is helpful to constantly be reminded of because it is the items in which we can consider. So if you are speaking as a member of the public, it is, it would behoove you to speak to one of these five items or all of them, because those are the only things that we can consider when considering an application. One, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties be created by the granting of the variance? Will the proposed action compromise the character of the neighborhood? Two, can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance? Three, is the requested area variance substantial? Four, will the proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? And five, my personal favorite is the alleged difficulty self-created. Thank you. With that administratively, has everyone reviewed the minutes of the September meeting of the zoning board of appeals? And is there any comments or anything reflected on that? Or can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, minutes accepted. And then can I get a motion to open the public hearing on agenda item number one?
Motion to open the agenda, number one.
Sure, if you could go to the podium, state your name and address and ask, not a substantive question, please.
My name is Stakis, 80 Sargent Avenue. Just wanted to ask, is the city document on the website?
Right now, on the website is the request from the applicant to adjourn. I know that's for sure, for certain. If the, I don't believe that the determination is on, I might be incorrect in that, but it certainly will be available at some point. If not through the city, the applicant is likely going to be submitting it because they have indicated that they are going to appeal the determination that was issued.
Okay.
It should be available at some point online.
Okay, so the city doesn't, isn't required to post that?
We might post it, I'm not sure. I just have to go back to my office and see sort of where we left off on that. It's been a quick few days, but again, it will be available at some point on the internet.
In one minute. Thank you.
So I have a motion on the table to open the public hearing on agenda item number one by, Elaine?
Yes.
Can I have a second, please?
Seconded.
Second by Stowe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, Ariah.
Good evening. Ariah Segal, representing the applicant. So we presented this application at your August meeting with a different proposal, and you asked us to look at some options on, you know, how we could reduce the intensity of the variance request. We also included a project narrative that gave an overview of the owner's goals and how we approach the alternate solution and addressed some concerns that were brought up by the public. The plan was changed to remove that proposed bedroom that was right near the side yard property line, it was a little over a foot away. We changed the way the plan works. So instead, we're connecting the existing house to the existing garage, and that garage will become a home office, and we're moving the bedroom into the interior of the house on the first floor. So the house has an existing non-conforming side yard setback of eight feet, and we're in like about 8.7 feet with the living room addition. And so, you know, that's set in even a little bit further than the existing non-conforming. And that's something we discussed also at that August meeting, and we suggested that, you know, that that would be helpful to get that away from the side yard property line. So we think that this new design reduces the intensity of the variances. And so now we have the two variances, the side yard setback, and again, that basically follows the line of the existing house. It goes a little bit further away from the side yard property line, and then there's the rear yard setback, and that's also existing because it's the garage building. So, you know, the fact that we're connecting requires us to ask for that variance, but nothing's changing with the footprint of the garage or its relation to the rear yard line. So that's basically a summary of where we are. The applicant's here. Do you want to say anything?
Good evening, and my name is Eva Garcia, 359 Cherry Street. I addressed you a couple of months ago, so I think you remember, basically, the intention to do this, to request these variances, is to be able to remain in the first floor due to some health issues that I'm facing, and to make use of the current space also for my home office transitioning to my new practice. I hope that with the new design, you feel that we address some of the concerns that you share with us. At the time, we felt that making use of the current foot squares, the footprint, it's a way to address it and staying away from the property line. Thank you for your consideration.
Ariah, do you have the ability to show, just for the benefit of the public and for me, the overlay of the previous proposal versus the current one?
Okay, give me a minute.
Yeah, no problem.
So previously, the garage was staying where it is, which it is now, but we're just connecting it, and then there was that bedroom addition that was, you know, tied up in this side yard.
Okay, and then if you go to the-
So that's the previous proposal, correct?
Right.
Ariah, can you zoom in a little? I think it might be easier for the board to see. Because really, the only, yeah, the only important part is that one.
Right. Okay, and then just, Bruce, just to clarify, the variance request under the, that version, not that version, the other one, was what, and what is it now? Just for clarity? Sorry to put everybody on the spot.
And I could answer.
So the new one, so the new variance request is that they're looking for four feet at the back property line, which is the smallest distance, which is the greatest variance. That's a requirement of 50 feet in the rear yard. They're currently, because again, it is an existing structure, there's four feet there today, but they're changing the use, so it would still require a variance.
Right.
Going from an accessory structure now being connected to-
Manhouse.
So it's connecting the existing structure to the main structure, so now the entire structure has to meet the setbacks for the primary structure on the property.
Right.
So you have 50 feet, so they need a 46 feet of relief on that side, and on the side, they're proposing, I believe it's 8.7 feet where 25 feet is required.
And the previous request was?
And the previous request on that side was, I believe, two feet.
Yeah, I think it might be.
To a change.
It was a 1.2 foot.
A little bit less.
Yeah, it was, it was 1.2 feet, the previous side yard setback, so the variance was going to be for 23.8 feet. And now it's- The current side yard setback is an 8.7 foot, so the requested variance is 16.3 feet, and to the applicant's point, the, with the 8.7 feet, it's actually within that sort of line of the existing building. Yeah. The rear yard setback was previously a proposed 36.1 feet, so the variance would be 13.9 feet. Now it's a proposed four feet, so the variance is 46 feet, with, again, to the applicant's point, it's because the existing garage is being touched. Yep. Understood. Yeah, that, I think, provides the clarity that I was seeking to understand and get on the record.
How many square feet are being added to the house?
I didn't calculate the total number of square feet thing.
What?
I don't have that right now.
Is it, everything in the brown there? No, well, is everything in the brown new, or the garage is not new? So is it, looking on the picture that's currently up there, is it, is everything new, the first brown square and then the rectangle?
Yeah, the first brown square is basically, there's an existing deck there.
Okay.
Which would be removed, and that first square would basically fill that area.
Yep, and then the rectangle is new, and then the rear square is the garage now, but that's going to be converted as well, so really, is that right or no?
Yeah, that's correct, and I showed that shaded like that.
Yep.
Because it's, you know, it's part of the house.
Understood, yep.
And there's a second story on top of the sitting room on the ground floor.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anyone here from the public to speak on this application? If so, do so now or forever hold your peace. All right. Yeah, go ahead.
Last time, one of the neighbors mentioned there's a problem with drainage. In your reply, you said you're looking into fixing that. Have you hit upon something to take care of that?
Well, we're going to make sure that, you know, all the new structures and the existing garage are, you know, have gutters and leaders that go to the right place. We haven't done the engineering on that yet because we're not at that stage, but, you know, we understand what the issue is and we'll do what we need to do to address that.
Yeah, 0.9 on the plans here. I plan to review the progress form one.
Yeah, because I think that was one of the requests, you asked us to, you know, make sure it's on there, so it's all important.
Yeah, because, I mean, gutters and leaders, if the house as it stands now is causing an issue, even with gutters and leaders, it would seem that's got to run somewhere too. You mentioned drywells.
Right.
As a possibility, but isn't that where like your leach field is, in that kind of field to the right side of the house as you're looking at it?
Oh, yeah, that larger area?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where the leach field and septic is, but, you know, there's other areas where we can direct water immediately. You know, we're going to see what the issue is and see how to address it. I'm not sure that the garage has a gutter on it now, so that's an impermeable surface that's running off, and, you know, that may be part of the problem, but we'll make sure to address that.
I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing on agenda item number one.
Motion to close.
Motion by Montos, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Elaine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will go through the resolution and factors. As to whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting of this area variance, can I have some discussion on that, please?
I don't see it as a detriment to the neighborhood in terms of visually or traffic. The runoff still does concern me, though. That could be a detriment to the neighborhood, their uphill.
Sorry, I had a minute. What was the question?
Her comment was that if it's, so one of the factor is, or the second half of the factor is, is it a detriment to nearby, will a detriment to nearby properties be created by the granting of the variance? And her comment was, it's undetermined if the runoff issue would be exacerbated by the granting of the variance, and so therefore, if it did, if it was exacerbated by the granting, then that would be a detriment to nearby properties. Did I?
Thank you.
Sure. Which I would tend to agree with, I don't think it's an undesirable change. So I think, I think that factor is, for me, also undetermined by the information that we have, because I haven't seen anything, I haven't seen engineering to say that it is, you know, reducing or increasing or doing nothing to, you know, the alleged runoff. Montos?
I'm really, I don't have anything that says it's going to be a detriment, to be honest with you, but it just seems large, fitting in a lot in a pretty narrow area, it seems to me. I get it, the garage is an existing structure, it's just that one rectangular piece that's connecting the new structure to the existing house and the garage. It just seems large, but that's not a consideration, that's not a factor to worry about.
Right.
I don't have anything that says that this is going to be a detriment or not be a detriment, so.
I mean, also, just to expand on that, that addition, that connector piece is one story, so it's pretty low.
So it minimizes, yeah, I'm okay with it.
And Stowe, any comments on the factor, first factor?
I don't think, well, thinking about it as walking down the street and looking at it, I don't think it's bizarre or unsightly or sort of crazy looking. I think the only really dangling question for all of us is the question of the runoff, and if, you know, the assertion that you think you can fix it.
Yeah, I mean, that is something that we have to deal with, you know, for any kind of new building project, and that may be something that's under your purview.
Yeah, so I mean, with the runoff, I mean, obviously, the roof structures will create, you know, additional runoff or, you know, collection of water into a, you know, into the gutters and the drain pipe. They can take measures to try to mitigate that with all the construction, possibly getting all the roofs together to, you know, to lead into some type of a drainage structure, or there are some type of a drywall in the ground, or, you know, even a water garden on site, some type of rain garden, you know, so that they could put all that water back into the ground and not let it run off the surface, you know, surface runoff, and then eventually make it down to one of the neighbor's properties.
So is that something, I mean, this is a question for, I guess, maybe both you and George, is that something that we could require as a condition of the variance, or is that something that your office would require in the field?
I mean, I can, I can take care of that within the office, so when, when the applicant comes in with the permit, I will just make sure that they, you know, address that situation.
Sure.
In terms of making a condition, I'll leave that up to George, because I'm not sure if that would-
Yeah.
Something, because, because it was a comment, you know, from the public prior.
Yeah, in terms of conditions, they have to be reasonably related to a concern related to the variance, so I don't see it as an inappropriate condition per se, but to that extent, as Bruce said, the process itself almost takes care of it, because Bruce, you still have to issue a building permit, correct? So if there's any issues, I think it's also within Bruce's purview to say, a building permit cannot be issued until you address this concern, this valid concern with storm water. I don't know, is there anything in the code that requires a stormwater analysis over certain square footage of construction or anything like that, or?
Usually on larger projects, you know, most of the time when any project goes to planning board, we always do a stormwater review on that. Most of the single-family projects that go up, usually not, you know, if it's for an addition, we usually don't address the stormwater, but in this case, being there was an issue from the neighbor, you know, we can address it.
Sure. So I think, you know, from my point of view, you know, as chair, I would say that you are aware of it, obviously, I think that we probably would just make it a condition, you know, I think that you would do it anyway, but, you know, we're, you never know how long a building inspector lasts. So I think it would just be best to be on the record, I think, you know, maybe it's belt and suspenders, maybe, you know, we're just doing it thoroughly, so, you know, everybody's in agreement. So anyway, that's just factor number one. On to factor number two, as to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue, that does not require the area variance. Can I have some discussion on that factor, fellow board members, please?
Because of the layout of the lot and the retaining wall, I don't see how they could actually do additions to the house. You'd still need area variances, maybe a little less in the back if you didn't use the garage, but.
I think they did, you know, I mean, I don't disagree with Montos in the sense of it being a lot, but I also think that they did a nice job of listening to us and coming back with an alternative proposal, and I think that that is something that a lot of applicants don't do, and so I think that that should be considered. I think that, you know, it's, it's within the, you know, outside footprint, which I think is something that we often consider, so I think that, I don't think that they can achieve their, their method by another feasible, by another feasible way without, without some type of variance, and I think they, this proposal is a better proposal than the one they came with last time.
Yeah, I agree. I don't have anything to add, I think the chairman said it perfect.
Yeah, I agree.
Appreciate you listening to us from the first go around, and I think you, at least from my perspective, addressed a lot of that.
Yeah, exactly. I was going to say exactly the same thing about listening to our requests and comments and coming back with a better plan, and I think it's as good as you can get it on that property.
Sure. As to whether the requested variance is substantial?
Well, again, from a visual, the footprint seems to be kind of substantial, it looks like you're cramming a lot in a narrow space, but the whole property is much bigger because you've got the whole field to the side, so I guess reality is, looking at the whole property, it's not substantial, looking at it just, yeah, I guess I'm rambling, it's not substantial overall.
I think it's substantial.
I would say mathematically, it is substantial, it may, it may just be substantial. I think what make, what could, you know, sort of makes it a question is the entire other portion of the lot there.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's a factor in the overall balancing of, of this factor with the other factors. Stowe?
Yeah, I think, I think I'd be a little more concerned if there was another house right next door, and it would, might seem incredibly densely packed, but with a open field next to it, or a scree, or whatever it is, I don't think it would have that same sense of being an enormous change of things.
I mean, also, just in terms of what you're saying, that the other neighboring houses are further away, you know, they're closer to Tyrranda, and then you have this big field the neighbor to the side, and the house is further away as well.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, is noted in the, in the change.
Yeah.
As to whether the proposed variance will have variances, will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No, aside from the drainage issue we talked about earlier.
Agreed.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, you know, goes back to, you know, the same concern that we've, we talked about in, or factor one, so I think that we're going to make a condition and- So I think that we're going to make a condition, and the building inspector will do his best to enforce the condition and get a, a building that doesn't have a lot of runoff. And as to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
Yes.
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 Yep. And the last question, is this the minimum variance necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community?
I understood your purpose for wanting the additional two-story where the deck is today. I understood your need for the home office. I guess I don't understand the need for that rectangle. I didn't hear that as part of the initial, what you were trying to accomplish.
Why, why we're connecting the, the, books now to the garage.
I'm going to assume I know, because you want to go to the home office in the winter or on a rainy day?
Yeah.
And not carry an umbrella?
And on, on the plan, it says sitting spaces, it's space that'll be used not just necessarily as a passageway.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's essentially a passageway, but we're trying to make something more than a long, skinny hallway out of it.
Right.
And you're going to be the primary resident throughout the structure?
I don't know if it's the minimum necessary, but I don't think it's completely out of proportion.
Yeah, I think that's, I think with the condition, well, I, I think you're referring to area, physical area. I, you know, I think it could be, in theory, reduced. I don't know if that does, I don't know what that achieves really relative to the question, that's, that this, this particular question. I think that when, when thinking about preserving and protecting the character of the neighborhood, I don't think this affects the character of the neighborhood, I think our condition will preserve the health and safety and welfare of the community. And that's how I look at it. Any other comments from Stowe or Montes?
Other comments? I guess the only way you could do it that would potentially make it less of an issue would be to build a tunnel to the garage, but that's a little overkill.
Okay, so I guess I have just some questions. One is, do you want us to proceed on a vote tonight with four members knowing that you need three of us? Yes, okay, and then the conditions, right? So we've already talked about one, one condition. The other two conditions are our standard conditions is we, of course, paying law fees associated with a variance and then the building permit and CO. And then finally, getting a, a building permit within six months and then completing construction and obtaining a CO within 24 months after the issuance of that building permit, is that okay?
Yeah, basically, once they approve this and within six months, it's a long term, it's a, yeah.
Okay, well, good, great, okay, all right, so I will then take the roll. So, well, actually, I'll, I need a motion, can I have a motion to approve or deny the variance?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Montes, can I have a second?
Seconded.
Second by Stowe, all right, so Stowe, can I have a yes or no on the variances?
Yes.
Yes, Montes?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so you have your variances, congratulations. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on agenda item number two?
Motion open?
Motion for Montes, can I have a second?
Second.
Second, second by Elaine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is the applicant for agenda item number two here? It is, yes.
So if you can just introduce yourself, present sort of what the application is for, and if you could just walk the board through the request, I understand it is a variance request for .4 feet from the side yard setback, 10 feet are required, 9.6 feet are presented. So if you could just sort of walk us through how this happened, what, what brought you here, and that background fact?
The jury is slightly still out as to how it happened, but it's, I guess, a contractor error. As it says, needs to be 10 feet, foundation tapers from, I think, 10.6 maybe down to 9.
9.6?
I'm sorry, but you have to introduce yourself, name and address first.
Dana Lodge, 60 Brooklyn.
Just for clarity, you are the owner, you're not a representative of the owners. Okay, and so basically, your, your understanding at least is, is that you intended to follow the code and it just wasn't followed by error?
Yes. Seems to be the case.
Sure, and Bruce, how did your office become aware of this?
I told them.
Yeah, so the, yeah, so the applicant submitted an as-built survey for the foundation. And when they submitted it, they made me aware of the, you know, that they weren't meeting the setbacks.
Okay, and that caused you to refer them?
I prompted them to come to the ZBA first to get relief before they continued any further on the project.
Okay, all right, very good, and, and, okay.
I honestly, I don't know, it's possible the pins got shaken loose during construction, it's possibly mismeasured. I honestly have no idea.
Sure.
Contractor's probably not going to offer up a whole lot of reasons.
Sure, Bruce, there is, I mean, in your opinion, there, other than error, right, is there any reason why an owner of this lot would, would choose to do this intentionally, nefariously?
No, I mean, they, they, so on the front of the, the front of the property, close to the Ver Plank, they actually, you know, have maintained the setback there. It's for whatever reason, somehow this, that one side, that one line kind of got us skewed. As you go down, you start losing the distance to the property line, just about the halfway point. So somehow the marker, you know, when they laid it out, whether or not they, you know, they were taking it off of, well, four corners, or the contractor may have just, you know, laid out maybe two of the walls off the lines, and then he was doing the other one and kind of threw himself off somehow.
I mean, there was, I'm sure you know, there was a fair amount of excavation.
Yeah.
Again, it's possible during the excavation, something shifted. But his only rationale was that it's a very narrow lot, and the house is literally at the 10 feet. I didn't give him any wiggle room, so he had to be dead on, unfortunately, he was not.
And you have a slanted property line between you and the next lot, too, so...
The west side, I think, is parallel, the east, the Willow Street side is saying.
Well, the, the back is at an angle relative to the street, so it's like wedge shaped.
It's tapered, it's not an easy layout.
So Bruce, what, what is complete, what is there today?
So what's there today is the, the foundation up to a slab, so they have a slab on grade at this point.
So the, the effect of not granting a variance would be the, the removal and then relaying of, of that on, you know?
Yeah, they would have to, they would have to somehow basically, I mean, it would be difficult. I mean, it's either you break up the whole thing and you just take it all out, because it's, it's not like they poured separate pours, it was, this is one big mass of concrete that they, that they poured.
Sure.
So it's, it would be difficult to try to alter it, trying to cut off the portion that goes over the property line, and then additionally, they would have to add on to the other side to, you know, try to square it up somehow.
And so we're talking about a .4, well, it's a .4 foot variance at its most, at its largest, correct? Is that right?
Yes, that would be the largest point.
And, okay, and it, but it's slanted, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, he didn't quite lay it out parallel to the requirement, or to the property line.
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
No.
It would be massively expensive, just to make it clear.
Quite a battle, he's not going to redo anything with the generosity of his heart.
So I just want, you're asking for, you're asking for 2.2 inches?
No, it's 3 inches, .4 feet.
Whatever .4 feet is equivalent to an inch is.
So it's roughly 3 inches.
So .4 feet is going to be roughly 3, it's like 4 inches roughly.
At its mo-
No, 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 no.
At its most.
At its most.
It's a lot less than that.
At its worst, right, the, the point that will be, yeah, okay, all right, very good. Can I have a mo- Yes.
It's 4.8 inches.
Okay, right, we're talking about 4.8 at its, at its maximum, understood. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing on just, yes, motion by Montes. Second by Elaine, all in favor, aye, all right, let's go through the factors.
Jordan, sorry to cut you off, just for the record, there was a email that came in, do you have that handy? Just for the record.
Yep, I will go to that. I can't remember how.
It was, we got it October 16th, 8:36 AM.
Can you, can you forward that to my other email, just so I can quickly get to it? Thanks, George. All right, so we have an email from Martin Mayeski, sorry for the pronunciation there. This was received on Saturday, October 14th, and I'll just read this into the record. Hi, my property is 54 Ver Plank Avenue. I'm sorry, I won't be able to attend the public hearing. I just want to let you know that I am against the, allowing the setback. It seems both the builder and the architect should have taken this into consideration when plans were being drawn up. Asking for lease, relief at this time is like closing the barn door after the horse is let out. I am totally against it. Also, I am, I was not notified that there would be rock breaking with heavy machinery at this site until I was sitting at my kitchen table, and the house started to shake and hot coffee spilled over my hand. I went over and asked the driver of the machine to stop, and was told that he had permission from the builder and wouldn't, wouldn't give me the name of the builder. I called my insurance company and was told to take pictures of the inside and outside of my basement in case of cracks. Thank you for listening, even though I believe it will not make a difference. Deacon Marty Mayeski.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Deacon Marty M-A-Y-E-S-K-I is the name of the person.
Oh, he was a deacon, okay.
All right.
I don't need, do you want me to respond?
No, you don't, you don't.
You don't have to respond. Okay, as to the factors, as to whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance?
No.
No.
No, and if we didn't, and they had to take it out, it would be harder on the neighbor.
Couldn't agree more, I think that the neighbor would be, would be more upset if we had them destroy everything and then relay it. As to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue, that does not require the area variance?
Not feasible.
No.
No.
No, as to whether the requested variance is substantial?
No.
No.
No, as to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse or effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district?
No.
No.
No, as to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
Yes.
I would, did you direct them?
No.
So I would say, no, it's not self-created.
Self-created, but...
I would say it's not self-created. If you didn't direct them.
I did not direct them.
It's not self-created.
It's more heading.
Our chairperson loves this question.
I, I'm not going to, I just, I'm not going to get into it. I'm just not going to be able to argue it. As to whether the minimum, minimum variance necessary and adequate to preserve, whether this is the minimum variance necessary to adequately preserve and protect the character and health of the, sorry, the character of the neighborhood and health, safety, and welfare of the community?
I think it's the minimum.
Yes.
I agree, can I have a motion to accept or deny the variance?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Elaine, all, well, I'll call the roll. Elaine?
Yes.
Montes?
Yes.
Stowe?
Yes.
I am a yes, go in peace with your variance, absolutely.
Thank you. Before I adjourn, I just, George, I just wanted to ask you regarding 925, can you tell us what the status is of the, our, our, the city's consultant reviewing the applicant's financials?
Yeah, so we're, we're in the process of retaining a consultant, we haven't found one to retain yet. And once we get any kind of estimate, obviously, that will be shared with the applicant, so, and obviously the city, so that we make sure escrow accounts are all current and everything. And at that point, the consultant will be able to review everything that has been submitted by the applicant to determine really what it comes down to, for the most part, is the reasonable return. That's the question we're talking about on the dollars and cents proof. So we are in the process and hope to have that finalized shortly.
So I guess, I guess my concern as chair is, I, you know, I think obviously, you know, the application was adjourned today, and that was due to a building inspector determination that was made, and then the applicant wanted more time, but assuming that didn't occur, you know, the applicant would be here, and we wouldn't be able to act on this application because we don't have financial information. And this board authorized the hiring of that consultant in August, it is now October. So I, and I, I think my fellow board members would just appreciate it if, if the board authorizes the hiring of someone, for that person to actually be hired. And, you know, if, if not for the adjournment, I would have wanted to act on this application tonight, and I don't think we would have the ability to do that, and so I just think that it's important to give us the tools that we need to do our job.
Absolutely.
That's all I have to say about that.
What's the likelihood you think it'll be secured by November 21st is the first part of the question. The second part of the question, we should also make sure the consultant takes into consideration the information that we got, like how much money was received back from insurance, as an example.
Yeah, the consultant will have, be able to consider every piece of information verbally and, and submit it in paper, likelihood of a decision, I don't know. Really, it depends when we can finalize everything, get the consultant, what, how much time they need to review, and I, I don't know, I don't want to speak to likelihood of anything and timeline coming up.
What kind of background would such a consultant have? I mean, is it somebody you could go to a certified public accountant? Or somebody who has to have deep expertise in real estate, or what?
Again, there's, there, there are consultants that deal with quote unquote, they're use variance consultants, let's say. You know, is it an appraiser, is it a CPA, is it a use variance consultant, so to speak? I, I don't know, it, it depends on the qualifications of each person and what they feel comfortable with being able to determine.
And, and George, is this your office, the tire, that's, I guess, seeking?
Seeking, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, at the, and for the record, at the, at the expense of the applicant?
The applicant, yes, will be paying for the consultant's review. That's why, once we get a proposal, an estimate, assuming obviously it's a realistic estimate from the consultant, which we have no reason to believe they would give an unrealistic estimate, it will be shared with all parties so that we can make sure that all escrow is taken care of and there's not going to be any hiccups to that extent.
So, so, yeah, I, again, the point of my comments is just, I would like to move it along to the best of our ability to do so, and I just want that to be out there. Any other comments?
I'm with you, other than I agree.
Okay, all right, so I'll ask for a motion to, yes.
It's not a public hearing, there's no, the applicant isn't here, so.
Sure. Sure.
Charlotte Woodward, 821 Walcott, I just wanted to be clear on the reason for the adjournment. I'm listening carefully, it is, is it because the financial ask-